Good evening. Welcome to the Monday, February 26th, 2024, meeting of the Grafton Planning Board. We're on both in the room and on Zoom, the usual Zoom process.
Yep.
Roll call.
So in the room for the board, we have Mr. Davidson.
Davidson present.
Mr. Robbins.
Present.
Mr. Hesseger.
I'm here.
And Mr. Wood is here. On Zoom, we have Mr. Beckett Trammann.
Yep, Prabhu is here.
Thank you. And staff present is Fiona Coughlin, Town Planner.
Here.
And Natalia Oliver, the Office Manager.
You're muted.
She's commented.
She said in chat, "Here." She said in the Zoom chat that she's here.
Well.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Very good.
And our associate member, Ms. Presnahan, is absent at this time. She may try to join us via Zoom, but there's no guarantee on her connectivity.
Okay. Public input. This is when, if there's someone out there in the room or on Zoom who has something to talk to us about, it's within our purview, it's not on the agenda otherwise, this is the time. Is there anyone? Apparently not. Moving on. Action items. Request to withdraw without prejudice, Farnhamsville Acres, MRSP 2023-12. We have a letter asking, confirming that they want to withdraw without prejudice. I thought we were going to get a clearer statement.
Yes, I did as well. I, let me just share my screen. Okay. So, Mr. Chair, as a follow-up from last time, the applicant has requested to withdraw without prejudice. They revised their letter and resubmitted it. The board took this up at the last meeting, but discussed wanting to hear from the applicant why they are requesting to withdraw and why they feel should be without prejudice. Mr. David was supposed to attend the last meeting, did say that he could come, but didn't end up coming, and it looks like we're having the same situation here. We have been, you know, we, as, you know, staff were assured that he was coming, so, you know, I'm not sure.
I do know that at least some of the requests to continue were done by Mr. Norman Hill, who is present for another hearing tonight. I don't, I'm looking at you to see if you know anything about this in particular that will be useful for the board to know.
I'm sorry to say, I don't know anything about this.
Okay.
It's okay.
Yeah, this is a surprise to me. I really am in the total dark on this. I don't know why.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, I apologize for not having more information, but, you know, there's only so much we can
I, two thoughts I have for at least the board at this point is, number one, the last filed request to continue was to March 21st, it looks like, of this, of this year. We could table this until that date, until, and tell them they can come, and that's, you know, that's a final chance to get, without prejudice, or we will, you know, act on that to, as the board's decision, without their input, or we could just try to make a decision tonight. It's up to the rest of the board, but that's my thought.
Well, seeing as all the, the hearing is active.
Yes.
And currently has a continuation date scheduled, it doesn't strike me that there's any requirement for immediate action on this, that since we, since there remains some uncertainty, you know, that, you know, as a technicality, the applicant has not yet requested a withdrawal without prejudice. Their letter doesn't state it, is not stated as a request, and that, from the discussion at the previous meeting, the board was interested in learning more from the applicant about, as Chair, the Chair just stated, the, you know, the nature of the request and, and the reasoning for requesting that it been withdrawn without prejudice. I think we have time, as far as our schedule is concerned, there is no urgency to address if the applicant, you know, if nothing else, the applicant has to be prepared to come back for the continuation of the hearing. If they would like to cut that short, the board would appreciate some additional information that was not currently in our possession, so.
What did you say?
I said the 21st, that's what that writing looked like, but it is probably the 11th, considering we have a meeting on the 11th.
Yeah, we have an, on the 25th.
The, the writing on that is a little bit hard to make sure, to be sure on, for me.
All right.
Yes, my notes say that the continuation was to March 11th. Do we, which is our very next meeting, come to think of it.
Come to think of it. Do we want to, do we need to take a vote, or can I just say, we'll table it?
Yeah.
I can just say.
I would be comfortable just saying that we table, taking no action tonight.
Yeah, well.
Without a vote.
And I would just note, given the lack, or like, not having as many updates, if we're in a similar situation, I might be inclined to do it with prejudice in the future if we don't hear any information within the next session.
Well, but he's not requesting if it's going to be, see, we don't know what he'd do if he has to have without prejudice in order to withdraw, but he's going to have to do something on the 11th, either continue the hearing or we'll close the hearing and take action.
Mm-hmm.
I'm really not too impressed with.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's see. Discussion about urgent care facility, Bollock Plaza. Brian?
Yes, sir.
If you can get to, maybe pull the mic over on your side. Go ahead. Good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you again.
I understand that you'd like to talk to us about this.
I do. Actually, I'm Brian Fitzgerald.
Can you get the mic closer to you?
Brian Fitzgerald from 215 Properties, developing the parcel over on Worcester Street there, and I am speaking currently with a potential tenant, which is an urgent care facility, and under the current village mixed use plan, it does not allow a for-profit facility in there. Under Section 3, it does allow a nonprofit, but not for a profit agency. What I'd like to try to do is, I was going to create a citizen's petition and see if I could get the, an amendment to the zoning, just to change that one section from a, you know, a no over to a special permit, or perhaps even a yes, like it is for the nonprofit, and be able to, possibly be able to get that tenant in there.
You're thinking of doing this in the existing building?
Yeah, you know, initially, it was, we were speaking about the back building, doing it over in that section there. That building actually is in excellent condition. I know it looks horrible the whole way it's situated now, but it's in excellent condition. And, but we've been back and forth even over the front building. They're going to occupy about 4,000 square feet is what it's going to be, so.
Yeah, but it, this is not involved in the redevelopment of the whole, you know, we've gone through this whole.
Yeah, no, this is just exploring to be able to get it before it really grabs any legs. I'm going to have to be able to confirm that, yes, I can do this as far as zoning, and I realize it's still a ways out. It does require a town meeting and all that, but.
Yep. There isn't a lot of time, actually, the lead time on zoning for town meetings. We, I'm not quite sure how, but we had an article in our file here from someone about, talking about the good and the bad, about urgent care. I didn't realize it was quite that much, if anybody caring, caring about it.
I don't really see any of the negative side at all. I truly just see the upside of it.
Yeah.
I currently operate one. I just built one in Worcester, right on the West Boylston Line about a year ago, when the.
I, I think.
Low-impact usage, great for the community, it's a service well provided.
Yeah.
Unlimited hours.
I think the point of that article was, it has negative, the proliferation of these has a negative impact on other healthcare aspects, and that's beyond, we, we don't decide about that.
No, that's business, but quite contrary, they actually pushing these things. That's why you see a lot of them under Reliant, UMass, different settings, because it takes some of the pressure off the emergency rooms for the silly things like kids got a fever, or even for doing DOT exams, they do a lot of aspects of healthcare.
No, having spent a few 12-hour sessions up at the UMass ER with not a whole lot of success, and I know people in, close to me have given up and left the ER.
Absolutely.
Yeah. As the article says, they, they treated it with chicken soup in the end. Yep, I think, you know, the, the gist of the article, if my takeaway from the article had, it had more to do with the people's behavior, rather than, you know, anything, you know, anything, you know, that's inherently negative about the idea of an urgent care facility, that, you know, they made the point that sometimes people are, people are going to urgent, urgent care where they wouldn't go to the ER, which is not necessarily bad unless, unless you really don't even belong in the urgent care facility, which is one of the concerns. There was a, there was a concern about, well, people prefer to go to the urgent care rather than to their primary care. Again, that's more of an issue of people's behavior and not an issue that I would, I would concern myself with from a zoning perspective. It's more of a, you know, that's more about, as you, as you said, right, a business, a business concept, that, I think, overall, the business concept is good, and I think the, what we had written up, Fiona had written up a, a proposal for the, for the, a use table amendment. At the board's discussion at the previous meeting, there was some question about size, potential size, for village mixed use, and for a number of facilities in the village mixed use, we have different requirements for small, under 5,000 square feet versus large, over 5,000 square feet. The latest proposal Fiona has drafted makes that.
Except I didn't see any difference in the use table.
Right. That, that, that way, that way can, I think, I think the, the, the size dependency with, within the village mixed use is consistent with how we've, we're treating other things.
Right.
We can, the differences would be the permitting requirements, which we can talk about.
Yeah. You, you said 4,000.
This would be under the 5,000 square foot.
Maybe we could look at just having under 5,000.
Yeah.
And not put in, not, not, think later, think further down the line if, if there's a reason to have, because I don't know how big they typically are.
They generally tend to stay right around 3,500, up to, you know, some of them get a little bit larger, but not much more than 5,000. They are all relatively small, actually.
Maybe in a highly populated location, it could be potentially bigger, but I think for.
Exactly. And you know, when you're referring to some of the customer base, if you would, it may be, I'm sure there's certain areas that are more inner city, where there's a lot of drug abuse, a lot more homeless, mental illness, yeah, then you're going to have some influxes, and it's going to be treated differently. But in a situation like this, I think it's going to be nothing but a real plus for the community, I really do, so.
Yeah, we might, we might contemplate in terms of the use table entries for, for right now, what's on the screen in front of us is, is basically, you know, all S's, special permits. I think you had pointed out, Brian, that a nonprofit version of this is allowed without a.
Without special permit, correct.
I didn't understand why we did, you know, it was brought to us, so we did it.
Yeah, and as you know, ultimately, in the village mixed use district, the planning board has jurisdiction as the governing authority, so it's, you know, kind of back to you either way, it's not with the zoning board.
We, we, we kind of tended in the village mixed use to be more, offering more opportunities for, by, by right or with site plan review, you know, and fewer, because we, I think the idea behind mixed use is to be a little bit more flexible. So I would, I would look at maybe changing the S's to Ps or Y's, at least in the village mixed use. I mean, aligning the, aligning the clinics line here, particularly the, the under 5,000, aligning that more closely with the nonprofit.
Okay, so just so I, so just, if I may, Mr. Chair, members of the board, so, so thanks, Brian, for coming. I think tonight, you know, Brian has, Mr. Fitzgerald has mentioned that he's working on a citizen's petition. We know that there's still some, some time, but, you know, the deadline will be coming up soon, and we think for purposes of this discussion, Mr. Fitzgerald kind of wants to get an idea, he really wants to make sure that the petition is worded the way that the board would like, I think that that's probably the goal this evening, which it seems like we're on the same page about that, but I just wanted to underscore.
That's why I'm actually looking for advice from the board to perhaps pass through to the planner, just because the language, the way it's written on the citizen's petition, what is written on there is exactly what is put for, so I want to make sure that it's.
Right.
Been there and had that happen.
Yep.
Many, many, many times. So how about if we put it, help him with what it looks like when you have only under 5,000, and you want to put site plan for village mixed use?
Okay, so we'll be, so P, you know, change the lettering to P for the four VMUs.
Right.
And then only a line item for up to 5,000.
Okay.
I think that there's any problem with that.
Communicate with the town planner and then.
And by, and by doing P, it's easier process on R when you bring it to the board as well.
Versus a special permit.
Versus special permit.
Yeah. Do you know how long it takes now to get to the nearest urgent care?
I do. You know, they generally have a radius of, they don't want to be within five miles of anybody, and it's getting closer. There's one in Westborough, that's about five miles away. There's one in Northborough, that's about five miles. Westborough, right by Route 9, by, where the Burger King is down there, and.
Because it strikes me that this is closer for, certainly it seems closer for me.
Yeah. Well, let's hope we don't have to see there, you know. No comment, I tell no one.
I have other people that I know well, who use it a fair amount, partly because you can't find PCPs.
True.
Or it's very difficult.
And you know, as far as the neighborhood goes, I'm going to be speaking to a lot of people about the neighborhood there once I'm, you know, starting to get this petition. Obviously, the first crowd that I'll be hitting with this, probably the only crowd really to gain that support. But I think the impact usage, they tend to only do about 40 to 50 max people a day, so it is not a high impact use at all. It's surprisingly low.
Yeah. And the only thing I'll add about doing as a citizen's petition is that you will be the person to advocate for this at, at town meeting primarily, and, you know, just the general process, and then, you know, the board can certainly talk to how it impacts the zoning and everything else, but.
We'll, we'll have a report.
Yes.
Sure.
Okay. You know how this works.
Appreciate your time and consideration, as usual, and if I could digress for a second, it was 25 years ago, right about this time, Mr. Hesseger, that we were discussing another Bolack, non-conforming site, if you would, just being kind to, and you were there at the time, so.
Oh, dear.
Glad you're back.
Just before, Brian, I wanted to just also, this came up at the last meeting, having a definition for hospital and a definition for clinic, so that would be, that, this is something that I put together, and it's part of the meeting materials, which the board has had a chance to look at, and then the public has too, so we don't have to delve into it too much, but just something to consider, that it wouldn't, it wouldn't just be a change to the use table, we're going to have to add a couple definitions.
Sure. Other things that it would affect by making that change.
Right, very right. We have to be able to. Oh, probably was.
You know, there was a, I believe it was, still in the Section 3, under the usage, there was another category for medical and professional.
Yes.
Dental, and that was allowable also, and I thought it's kind of almost a fine line between that, whether it's doctors' offices or.
Yeah, that's really, it's, it's, one of the notes I made about this topic is, is that, you know, that category is offices of licensed medical and dental practitioners limited to general outpatient care and diagnosis.
Correct.
So the urgent care facility is close to that definition.
Yeah, but it doesn't necessarily have MDs.
Right, so, so, so what we're talking about here is, you know, the wording in the draft, you know, that Fiona provided was clinic, not hospital, the clinic, which is a little bit of a more expansive definition compared to offices of licensed medical and dental practitioners.
Right, this would align better with.
Sure. With clinic versus.
The goal of the use, ultimately.
No, understood. I appreciate the thought on this, so.
Are we set?
I think so. I think.
I had a question. I had a question. Hi, Brian, this is Prabhu. While in principle, I'm very supportive of a healthcare facility and also having, helping trigger some economic activity in our town, I'm curious about your point with respect to the five-mile radius. Does the CVS Minute Clinic, does that count as one of the urgent care facilities, and is that going to create any kind of conflict with the five-mile radius postulate that you had presented?
Thank you for your question. I don't believe so. That's considered more what they would call a minute clinic, where they're primarily shots, a lot of things. It's not as extensive. This place actually has a small x-ray room. They're a little more extensive, you know, they'll see women for pregnancy checks, it's a little more involved, while still keeping it an outpatient referral service.
How about the, how about the UMass office in the Stop and Shop complex, next to the sandwich shop?
I never even noticed that.
Yeah, I have no idea.
You know, I, I don't.
I've been in there, I have a blood draw.
I'm assuming, is it more like a Quest clinic in some doctor's offices in there, like specialty offices or specialty?
All I've done is seen a nurse who drew a.
It's a lab. It's a lab, it's a lab facility on one end, on the other end is the CVS Minute Clinic, so.
It's hard to hear.
He, he was just saying that it's a lab on one end, and the other side is like a minute clinic for CVS.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
So, yeah, this would fall in a different.
And the five-mile radius you mentioned, that's, that's not a regulatory thing, that's just more of a business consideration.
No, it isn't. That's just what they like to generally look for in business, you know, they look at the demographics, which is excellent for this place right here, for a minute clinic, and not a minute clinic for an urgent care facility. They kind of base it on a different formula.
People can get there from the turnpike.
Yeah.
If, when they're looking. Would you expect it to be open 24 hours or so?
No, absolutely not. They have, they are seven days a week, but limited hours from generally like 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, 8:00 PM.
I think, I think we're in.
Just as, just as one more point of comparison for the use table and the, and the level of approval required, the doctor's office, or, you know, the medical and dental practitioner's office, which doesn't necessarily imply doctor, but somebody like, that in the village mixed use districts is allowed by right with no site plan approval, why? Except in the VMUGW, where it's an S, which I didn't, it's one of those inconsistencies that I was talking about for our, our last meeting, which is for, for discussion at another time, but this sort of facility aligns more closely with that than it does with a hospital, which is allowed, a nonprofit hospital is allowed by special permit in village mixed use, so, you know, this, this is closer to the by right use than to the special permit use, so.
Yeah, and if I could add, why this is of importance to me too, obviously, it'd have a strong anchor like that in there, it's going to allow me a guarantee to be able to, you know, secure better loans, to be able to really put some investment into the parcel itself, into the entire development. I do have other tenants, you know, prospective tenants, that I think people will be pleased with, once we stop really farming things up, so.
Yeah, so we might want to follow up on the question, is it an A, a Y or a P? But I think we're, we're, we're looking in that direction.
Yeah, if, if I may respond quickly, I think, you know, professionally, the site plan review is always nice, because there's going to be, there's design standards in the bylaw that, in this particular area, that it would be nice to kind of see those, and this, this use can, can fit nicely and incorporate some of those design elements. So that's, that would be very, very, from the planning department's perspective, very nice to see. And just to the point earlier, I forget who asked the question about 24 hours, that's why it's so important to have that definition in there, because we'll be able to outline very clearly what the differences between.
Right. But irrespective whether it's a P or a Y, if it's my property and I build it, I'm going to make sure it looks nice, so.
I think site plan.
And I understand the standards or requirements.
Yeah, even, even for a Y, the design standards in Section 12 of 5, they're just, it's, are they reviewed by the building department and the planner, which is a Y, or are they also reviewed by the board, which would be a P?
Sure. It will conform. I've already got a picture in my head, so.
I think site plan lets us verify the parking, be sure that the parking, among other things are.
Sure.
Okay. I think, I think we're good there.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay, bye-bye now.
See ya.
All right. We have town meeting articles, we might be able to do one or two before 7:30.
Prabhu's hand is still up.
Prabhu? Hello?
I'm trying to get it done.
Ah, okay. I thought he was done. All right. 2.1 definitions. Special, use of a lot, or, oh, that's the one.
That's, that one might take a little bit of conversation. Yeah, we only have three minutes, so.
You want to touch on the, the order, I haven't listed on my notes for some reason, first one on my list is that Fisherville Smart Growth Overlay District, Section 10.
Yeah.
That's just a change, just changing the name of the State Department?
Yes, yes.
Essentially a housekeeping thing. The only, the only comment I'll make, I have no problem with it as it stands, the only comment I'll make is, well, actually, two related comments. One is that even this simple change is going to require EOHLC's approval for the zoning change, you know, any, any way, anytime we touch a 40R, they have to approve it, they have to approve the zoning change. But in connection with that, when we were reviewing the North Grafton Transit Village 40R, EOHLC had a number of recommended changes to the zoning bylaw language, some of which I note could and should eventually be reflected in Section 10, the Fisherville. And so the question in my mind is, do we want to go ahead with this one, because I don't want to touch the, anything more complicated in this, or do we want to assemble a, a more complete list of, nothing substantive, but just to align Section 10 with the latest language in Section 13? I think we want to do that eventually, but do we, we, we can, we can do this now, although it's not essential, because the existing language says, or a successor agency, so it applies even, even though the agency's name has changed.
Right.
We have this, let's say, let's do it. Let me come with it.
Yeah, that's, that's the same, that's why I'm saying, we can do this.
It's a valid point, though, right? You mean, you're going to change it again later.
Yeah.
You can protect it all at once. I'm agnostic, but you know, whatever the board wants to do, I'm, I'm happy to do it, so.
That brings us to public meeting time, or public hearing time. Special permit and site plan for 20 Indian Path Dish Wireless, SP 2023-13. He's recusing. All right.
Okay, so I will do a very fast intro. So, lots transpired since Friday, this application, as the board is aware. This is for a co-location at 20 Indian Path. This was originally deemed as not an eligible facilities request. When the application materials were submitted, Crown Castle's counsel submitted a letter to us saying, in fact, it is, with the official clock starting on February 23rd. Let me just pull up that, I'll pull that up for the, to share. But, you know, regardless of that, the, the board is in a, is in a good position, because everything that the board has requested from the applicant to date has been provided, Dave Maxson has checked, although he's, he cannot be here this evening, he's reviewed everything, his memo is uploaded into the exhibits. I think the only thing that he had mentioned was that there was a document that provides Crown Castle's authorization of NB and C that had not been updated to remove a reference to new singular wireless, but it does contain Crown's name in parentheses, so it's. that had not been updated to remove a reference to new singular wireless, but it does contain Crown's name in parentheses, so it's it's minor, but um, you know, that, you know, the board might want to discuss if that's something that is of concern. But you know, other than that, everything that the planning department asked for, including an operations and maintenance plan, um, fixing the administrative errors with the property owner's signature, all of that is, is fine. Um, and you know, I think it's just a matter of deciding if we need anything else.
Does Dave agree that they, they do qualify for E F R?
So we actually weren't able to get, uh, he's, he's on vacation. So we weren't able to hear back. The letter was submitted on Friday and we weren't able to hear back from him about that. They, I think it's just a, because Dave Maxson, when the first, when the application was first submitted, he had said, because they hadn't explicitly stated that it was an E F R, we didn't have to proceed as such, but their counsel also wasn't present at the time to kind of counter that. So she's, she's submitting that to the record now, but we're at the end, so. It's kind of a non-issue, but.
Yeah, unless, unless there is anything more that we need from the applicant or any reason for us to further delay, if we have all the material that we need for this, uh, it, it becomes kind of irrelevant whether it's actually an E F R. You know, if, if we're, if we're about ready to approve it, if it is an E F R according to their, according to their letter on the E F R letter, we have sixty days from the twenty-third to approve it.
Yep, the date of the letter.
Like I said, if, if there is really nothing more that we need, it's not gonna take us another sixty days.
I hope not.
Okay, um, so, does anyone think we're not ready to close the hearing and ask staff to prepare a decision? A draft decision? Does anyone? If they don't.
I would make a motion that the board close this public hearing and direct staff to draft a decision.
Second.
Moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Dave?
Aye.
Davidson, aye.
Prabu?
Prabu?
Prabu, aye.
And I'm aye. Motion carries.
Great.
Go for it.
Will do.
All righty. Now, that brings us to.
Yeah, good point.
Better than I thought.
Let's see. We're just opening this, aren't we?
Yes, we do.
This is a new public hearing.
A new one, yep.
All right. Pursuant to sections one dot five dot seven, one dot three dot three, and five dot twelve of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaws, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, commencing at seven thirty P M in Conference Room A of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, to consider an application for a special permit and site plan approval request for an accessory use in agricultural and residential district for a seasonal outdoor eating and drinking establishment. Located at ninety-five Weston Street, shown as Grafton Cecil's map twenty-three Lot Five. Said property is located in a low-density residential R forty zoning district. The application, the applicant is Holden Farms LLC and the owner is Howard Holden and Sandra, Sandra Foy. Trustee is Howard Holden Nominee Trust and Sandra Foy Nominee Trust. A copy of the application plan is available for public inspection at the Planning Department during regular business hours or on the Town of Grafton website at W W W dot Grafton dash M A dot gov on the Planning Department Development Products webpage.
I'll just do a quick intro, Norm. You know, you know the drill at this point. Um, so uh, this is an application under the new newly approved um accessory use bylaw that was passed in May, section five point twelve. Um, this uh, has gone to, Norm has come to a couple of development team meetings to kind of make sure that this is aligning with, you know, town goals as well as being cognizant of issue, uh, you know, issues with the butters as well as uh, contribute, you know, hoping to um, you know, help, help the Holdens and help this farm prosper. Uh, I'm not gonna go too much. I did do an analysis which I uploaded to the exhibits, um, with some of my concerns, namely around um, some, it's gonna predominantly be, be noise and some of those issues that um, I'm sure Norm is gonna address. Now, um, one thing that I did want to say is we've received a couple of requests, planning staff to read some comments aloud. So when, Mr. Chair, you, you want me to do that, um, I will do that.
These are written comments that for one reason or another, the commenter feels they can't be here, they can't, they can't come in by Zoom.
That's correct.
I think, I think I'll allow that this time, but um, that's just not the way this board operates uh as a rule. When the time comes.
Okay.
Good evening. My name's Norman Hill. I'm a licensed civil engineer, a licensed land surveyor, and I'm president of land planning. I'm gonna try to present everything tonight so you can all hear me and see my drawings. That's kind of hard to have the board see this and you see it, but I'll turn it so everyone here can, can see this. I imagine everyone's here for this public hearing. So with me tonight, I have Tyler and Trevor Holden. Those are the applicants. And they've, they're applying for a special permit for a seasonal outdoor eating banquet facility, including alcohol sales and live entertainment. So this is facility that they were running two years ago and then action was taken so that they could no longer have a live entertainment or the alcohol sales. So this special permit would allow them to have the alcohol sales and the live entertainment. So since they lost those ability to do that, their businesses tanked. So I'd like to start with this section five twelve, which has four zoning issues that you need to consider. First one is, it has to be an agricultural use. So I've shown here in red, in red, these are the boundaries of the forty-nine point six acres. So this is where the farm stand is now, right here. So this is where the farm stand is now, and this is their aunt's house. She helps run this, run the farm stand. This is their grandmother's house. And then this is forty-nine point six acres. My Peter lives over here and the boys live across the street. So the first thing you have to answer, ask yourself, is this an agricultural use? And it is, it's an active farm. They've been struggling to grow their vegetables and make a profit. Second condition, it has to exceed twenty acres. So you've got forty-nine point six, exceeds the twenty acres. The accessory use can't exceed ten percent of the forty-nine point six acres. So we've, we're designated an area here, these aren't property lines. It's not gonna be cut out as an A and R or separate property lines, but these will be the boundaries defined by bearings and distances. We're gonna monument these corners with pins. So there's four point nine six acres here, directly behind the farm stand, directly behind the farm stand. And that'll be the area for which this accessory use will apply, just to that area. So it's only ten percent of the total. Want to make that clear. So does everyone understand that this four point nine is ten percent of the forty-nine? All right. And then lastly, there's this thing on noise. So the ambient out there is about sixty decibels. You're not allowed to increase it more than ten decibels. If you increase it more than ten decibels, that's a problem. Now, when they were operating before, there were times when they were exceeding that ten decibel increase. But then they took some mitigating action. They, they put up a tent for the band and they hung blankets, sound deadening blankets off the two sides and the rear and the ceiling of that tent. And it made a tremendous difference in reducing the amount of, of that sound level. So I have submitted three sound level readings to the board by video. Uh, I asked the board to be sure to look at those. And two of the readings are taken in the street with, with, with the instrument pointed towards the band where the band is playing. And you can see it clearly stays under seventy. It's like sixty-one, sixty-two, sixty-three decibels. And that was done on two different dates, back when they were operating with the band and, and everything else going on, selling the hot dogs and the hamburgers and the pizza and people having a good time there with their family. But anyway, um, and then the third one was taken, um, and I think Ray Mead, I don't, I don't want to get Ray in trouble, but I think he was there just to check out the situation. Oh, yeah. I think Ray was there to check out the situation. So he held this sound measuring meter in front of, it was where the audience was. And the decibels was well over seventy. Then he walked past the sound deadening tent towards the street and the sound levels dropped right off, well below seventy. So I'd like you to look at those three videos because this is gonna be a key discussion about this whole thing is, are you gonna allow, we, we're not asking for it to go over, we're, we're not gonna go over seventy. They've got the, so every time they set up for the band, that morning, this, this, this unit is assembled. The blankets are hung, ceiling wall sides, the blankets are hung. Band doesn't play unless this thing is, is in position and all the sound deadening equipment is hanging there. And then after the band leaves, they break it down because they don't want the weather to get after it. And if it's a nice night, they'll break it down the following morning. But this thing goes up and down as the band, before, before the band shows up, it's taken down after the band leaves. Now, Fiona, I got a copy of Fiona's letter today. She has many questions. I'm gonna write a letter to answer all her questions and I'd like to meet with Fiona in the next few weeks and go through all of her points and hopefully I can answer all her questions. We've asked for some waivers. I'd like to just talk to you about these waivers one at a time. Because it's a special permit, you oftentimes ask for a traffic study. So in this case, this was a functioning facility. I'm not aware of any traffic issues. Um, they're not wealthy people. They're just getting by selling vegetables. We'd like to, like you to consider waiving or requiring for a traffic, traffic study would cost probably around twelve thousand dollars. So we'd like to waive that. The peer review, um, we haven't designed any new structures. We haven't designed any impervious areas. The only thing we have called for, I'd like to show you for handicap people, like I said, if you're in a wheelchair, we have proposed some surfaces to get from the handicap parking spaces to the performance area, where, where all those picnic tables are, where people are sitting down, having their, their beer or their, or their hot dog or in that area, we'd like, we have an area for, for wheelchair access with wheelchair um, handicap accessible picnic tables. And then we're gonna extend that also over to the tent. So they can go from this paved parking lot across, we're proposing a painted striped sidewalk and then this now, this handicap surface, there's a, there's a trail. Grafton Land Trust has a trail at the bottom of Wheelock Road just before you get to one forty, near Elb, what, what is it? The name of the landing is, I forget her name. Eklaw Landing, right near there. So they hired us a year or so ago because there was a handicap complaint filed that the handicap people couldn't get down that hill to the trail. So we designed a handicap surface for that trail and I'd like you to look at it in the next couple of weeks. What it is, it's a plastic fabric. It's got a grid and there are, there are gaps between the plastic ribs. There are gaps. And that, that gap gets filled with sand and gravel. You can get a wheelchair right on that, but it's pervious. The rainwater goes right through it, right into the ground. So that's the only thing we're proposing to do to this site, to change this site, is to put down that, that fabric.
That fabric.
So the handicap people can get around and enjoy themselves at this site. So since we're not designing anything here, we haven't designed anything, we're not proposing any changes, no structures, no pavement, nothing. We ask that you not, ask our clients to pay for a peer review because that might be three to five thousand dollars and we'd rather not have, they'd rather not have to pay for that. Another waiver, because there are no changes in the site, no, no, no new impervious, we'd rather not do a stormwater management report. Stormwater management report, I would charge them about fifteen thousand dollars. I'd love to do it. But we'd ask that you waive that. So that stormwater port, report, if we were designing new impervious services, we would be changing the hydrology at this site. We would be changing the way the water runs off the site. We're not doing anything to change the way the water runs off this site. So we ask that you waive stormwater management calcs. And lastly, regarding this parking area, your regulations call for islands and trees. And we'd rather not rip up some of that pavement to put in islands with trees. We'd rather not do that. So we've asked for that waiver. So those are the only waivers we've asked for. Maybe later when I, when I summarize this meeting, after we hear what everyone has to say, I'd like to talk about um, the requirements that they have to meet. When you go through, there, there's like nine or ten different things you have to look at. I'd like to just go through that list later. That's, that's my overview right now.
Thank you.
Ready for comment? Why don't we hear them?
Sure. All right, so, yes, we, to just to reiterate what the chair has said earlier. Um, this is not, this is a special request and this is the opening hearing, so we are doing this, but um, this is not common practice for the board. Um, so we did receive two comments, which I will read aloud. Um, so dear planning board, our family has spent three years fighting for the peaceful and tranquil life we once had, which has caused severe stress and anxiety, lost friendships, false police reports and family discrediting. Here we are pleading with the board to consider our concerns with having a bar with live entertainment opening a few hundred feet from our front door on a scenic road. I would like to remind you that to avoid these types of venues popping up all over town, all around town, sorry, the planning board revised the zoning amendment so only twenty-plus acre farms could apply for this accessory use permit, discriminating against those smaller farms that could also benefit from this amendment. While some of the board members wouldn't want this in their neighborhood, as said, Mr. Ha, Mr. Bob Hassinger, it is in ours. While you don't have to listen to the music, contend with the traffic, deal with people using your driveway and sometimes our grass as a turnaround, or having bright light towers shining in your living room, we do. Our concerns have fallen on deaf ears, years after year, year, year after year, nor has any board member reached out to us or another abutter to hear our concerns. Furthermore, the select board at previous meetings blatantly ignore our show of hands to speak. A business has been allowed to operate while um, circumventing the zoning bylaws and our rights have been repeatedly dismissed. When will they be held to the same standards as other businesses, as all the other businesses in Grafton? I urge the planning board to consider the following so we can partially enjoy the summer and our life moving forward. Number one, limit the live music entertainment to Friday and Saturdays only. Live entertainment must end at eight thirty on Fridays and Saturdays. If there is a special event, the Holdens must apply for a separate event permit. Require the music venue to be moved further down the farm. The sound blankets hanging from a pop-up tent were not effective last year. And if they were, a zoning determination for live entertainment wouldn't have been filed. Yes, professional sound engineers should be contacted to properly mitigate the music or require acute, acoustic music only, no amplified music, as it was intended to be. The select board continued to ignore our concerns and issued permits against the advice of legal counsel and the A B C C. The Sunflower Shanty continued to operate with the select board, knowing they were in violation of a cease and desist order. The select board then violated the oath they swore to take by not having the zoning officer act on the violation. Again, our rights being dismissed. It is seriously past time for our concerns to be considered. Thank you, Jennifer Richlich eighty-eight, Weston Street. And I have another one more. Um, okay. Um, to the Town of Grafton Planning Board, first year slash application, application for thirty to fifty people with acoustical guitarist. Within weeks, it went to live, it went to live bands with noise levels off the charts. Many calls asking to lower sound level fell upon deaf ears. Second year, functions exceeding uh, um, one hundred to two hundred people and the noise level intolerable, no oversight on the part of the Town of Grafton slash Select Board. Meeting after meeting with the Town of Grafton Select Board to no avail, against the advice of Town Council and the A B C C, the board continued to use one day special permits to avoid the zoning law and denied issuing an annual entertainment permit in direct violation of the zoning bylaws. We obtained the permit through a public records request, at which time the comment from the select board was. at which time the comment from the Select Board was, oh, I guess we did. Our request for a cease and desist order was denied by the zoning enforcement officer per order of the Select Board. After filing a request for determination and a hearing before the ZBA, the zoning officer was ordered to issue the cease and desist in violation of the zoning law. Further complaints have been dismissed in violation of our rights as taxpayers. Again, the zoning officer told not to enforce the cease and desist order violating our rights to protection under the bylaws of the Town of Grafton. I guess the oath that elected officials take when being sworn doesn't, really doesn't mean a thing as there is no one to hold them accountable. We have 450 feet of frontage and less than 75 feet from this venue. The Holden's have 50 acres. And had they had any consideration for a butters and located in a more appropriate location, perhaps we would not be here now. In their application, they make reference to three occasions where Ray Mead, a Select Board member and a proponent of this, since day one, taking sound measurements with a Rise Pro Sound Meter available on eBay for $30. The Town of Grafton purchased a Reed Model R8080 Sound Meter for $600-plus to be used by the zoning enforcement officer. Nowhere in the three videos does it show Ray Mead is present. This is a clear conflict of interest and another example of the Select Board refusing to let the zoning officer do his job. The Grafton PD explained that without a noise ordinance, they could not act. Now we have one and now the PD can and should oversee noise levels as no other board has to date. It is my opinion, all the Planning Board did here is an attempt to circumvent spot zoning. I think the saying is putting a new dress on the same old pig. Where in any surrounding town is there a restaurant/liquor/banquet/entertainment establishment serving hundreds of people allowed to operate without either an approved onsite septic or a connection to town sewage? How can the Board of Health approve this? Holden Farms operates in an R40 residential zone on a designated scenic country road. A restaurant, liquor, banquet, entertainment venue is not appropriate. Bill Richlich, 98 Weston Street." And there's a request to see input from the Grafton Police Department and the Building Inspector in regards to all wiring and plumbing permits and inspections.
Okay. That's all that you've got?
Yes. Thank goodness.
Yep. Okay. Time for...
Fiona.
Yeah.
Am I correct in my memory that even, should the board approve this and everything else like that, they would still need to get entertainment licenses from the Select Board still? Or is that not required?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
They would.
Yes.
They need to get entertainment licenses.
The use is allowed.
And they need to get liquor licenses.
Yes, I believe so.
License.
Yep.
We don't have a jurisdiction over...
No, does?
It's a general bylaw, yeah.
Right. As I understand it, the prerequisite for getting a liquor license is that they get approval for a use that would allow that.
Yes.
Mm-hmm. But then... Which is, that part of it's us.
They can issue a liquor license and do whatever regulation is available under that. And likewise with entertainment. I can remember many years ago, Post Office Pub had an issue with neighbors because, you know, it was loud inside. And I remember coming up, I remember the Grafton News reporting that it had come up at a selectman's meeting and they looked into it. That was a long time ago. After the barn part was built on though.
Yeah. Safe to say that the approval being sought by the special, under the special permit is only one of a number of approvals that need to be obtained before the operation can commence.
Yes. I will get a confirmation from the TA's office one more time that that is definitely correct by the next meeting, but yes, that's my understanding.
And be interesting to know what range of options they have as to conditions they can put on those permits.
Yeah, I'm just remembering that the Attorney General's approval of Section 5.12 pointed out that they still will have an obligation to deal with ABCC for liquor pouring license in this case.
Yes.
So the AG made that very clear when they approved back in, I think it was around the beginning of November, they issued the approval of that.
Yes, and I have reached out to Town Council to get a legal opinion in writing about some of the comments we received back from the AG's office, particularly the additional comments for towns' consideration, Section 4, that talks about Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 3, which speaks to certain agricultural uses and how those are related to commercial agriculture and what can and cannot be regulated, just so it's very clear going forward. I mean, this bylaw was passed very specifically because it doesn't fit that criteria.
Right.
But it's always good to have an opinion in writing from Council nevertheless, so.
Absolutely.
First, could I get an idea of how many people are going to be interested in making some comment for us? Okay. Not as many as I... Okay, go ahead.
I just have the specific paper pertaining to what she's asking there. And I used that once before with Chris McGoldrick, I believe it was, for our agricultural food trailer permit there.
You're not being recorded if you're not on the mic. Okay.
Yeah, that will go on the record for this.
Yes, we have reviewed this.
Just hand it to Fiona, I'll read it online.
Okay. Time for people to give us comments.
I do have questions regarding the stuff. I can let the comments come first.
No, that's okay. A particular area is shown on that plan for where this is going to take place. And I would, I want to be sure that our decision says that that's where it has to be. Because you could be a lot closer to the street on that property, possibly. So I, so, yep. Okay.
Okay.
Name and address.
Hi, Betsy Smith, 125 Old Westboro Road. So I live very close to the Holden's Farms, probably within 500 yards to be exactly. But before I go on my comment, I am trying to understand something about your process. And before I came to the meeting, I read two letters. I read three letters online, two from the Richlics and one from another neighbor who lives across the street. So I'm just wondering why the two, those two letters were read and not Mr. Malloy's.
I can answer that.
Because she didn't ask and because we don't normally do it.
Okay.
I understood that there was an issue with the people not being able to be here and being unsure that their internet capability would let them speak to us over Zoom. And there is a provision in the law we're working under right now that basically do your best to make it work. So special case.
It was just my understanding that he wasn't able to be here either because of our work commitment. So I was just curious.
I've read her letter twice.
Yeah.
And I think we all have.
And all of the letters submitted to us, whether they're read at the meeting or not, are part of the record. And the board reads everything before they make a decision.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So I just, I'm going to make it very short. But I have lived at 125 Old Westboro Road for over 30 years. And within that period of time, there have been at least 75 houses built within probably a half-mile radius from my house. Okay? The impact that those houses have had on the area is huge compared to the impact that this establishment is making. This establishment is nothing but a gem. And the fact that we have a family in town that wants to do nothing but farm land and provide for their family in a way where I can look out my backyard and look at goats and look at cows, hear children playing in a playground, see families enjoying each other while they are providing these families who have children and have to live. If we, I do not want to live. I grew up in town, right on the Common almost. We're talking about right after the railroad tracks. The events that are on the Common have much more impact to people within the same mile radius than these people have on my life. If anything, there is extreme exaggeration in those letters about the noise level and the number of people. And, you know, they talk about 100 to 200 people? That, I think, is not realistic. Maybe one event for a wedding. I mean, who can't get married in their own backyard, really? I think it really is a bit much. These are all family-friendly activities. And the reason that people move to Grafton is so that we encourage this. And I don't want to think about the alternative. If these people are not able to provide for the families, what's going to happen to one of the only farm stands we have left in town? What's going to happen to all that land? I understand that they cannot be treated any differently than any other business in town. And I agree with that. But I also think that someone who lives right down the street would want things like all the waivers granted and this doing everything the town can do to help their business thrive. So that's my statement. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. There was at least one more hand. Okay.
Ken Ramlaud, 2 Monville Lane. I live probably 500 yards away from the farm. We live in a democracy and we had a meeting, a town meeting, and it was overwhelmingly in support of the Holden's. So if we live in a democracy, majority rules. And here we are, we have two or three families that are against this project here. And you've got all these people that went to the town meeting in support of the Holden's. Also, this farm is not the only farm in the area that does this. You go any other town, like the Kimball's Farm, they have these, they have a, what do they call it? A restaurant where they sell fish products, lobsters and all that stuff. And it's a big bike rally up there. They have bikes up there. You go up there any given weekend during the summer and the place is packed with motorcycles, hot rod cars, you name it. You go to the orchards in Berlin during apple season and the places are packed with families enjoying their farm, buying their product and all that stuff. You go up to Orange and they have the garlic festival up in Orange. Every year, every summer, they have a garlic festival and it goes on for a whole week. This is not the new, the farmers trying to subsidize their income. You know, I'm all for whatever we as a town can do to keep this farm alive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who...
Good evening. David Barnhart, 68 Weston Street. I just want to say, you know, I have not been ever an elected official in sort of the position you are, but I have been a businessman. And one of the things that I've seen, being just down the street from this, so I've watched this go on, is that it seems like we're creating an environment where a family that is trying to farm property that has been there for 60-some years is having obstacle after obstacle after obstacle put in front of them. Really starts, I wonder from the outside looking in, if it starts to create an environment where people start to think that, hey, we've got a problem with Grafton not wanting business. You've got a cherished farm. Most people, with the exception of possibly three of butters, have nothing but good things to say about them. And yet, time after time, they have to come in here and spend resources and lose money in order to try and make something happen which seems really, really straightforward as an easy thing to have happen. You know, the town meeting, as distinguished gentleman said, the town meeting overwhelmingly was in support of this. Farms nowadays, in this day and age, need other diverse income streams. It's not like other industries. They can have one, two, three, four years of bad crops because of the weather. And I won't get into any kind of political stuff, but weather is changing, which means that they're going to have some things that they're going to have to worry about going forward in order to adapt to that. And that's going to be a changing, that potentially is going to be a changing and a challenging thing for them. But they need diverse income streams. I can tell you that, being down the street, I'm right at the corner of Weston and Willard. When they close, I don't see this big influx. I can tell you when the trains are coming and when they're not because I can see increases in traffic there. But I can tell you, there's nothing that's come from Holden Farms that's ever bothered me or I've ever seen any increase in traffic flow. The town really has an issue here where we have to decide, can a small minority of people who may have some, in some ways, they may have legitimate complaints, everybody's tolerance for noise is different, everybody's tolerance for traffic is different. So I can't, I'm not going to belittle their complaints, even though I don't share them. But we have to decide if a small minority can basically overthrow what the entire town has come out and said, we want this to happen. We want the town to support them. We think this is something that's valuable. I don't want another development going on there. I mean, I want that farm. One of the reasons I moved to Grafton, I grew up in Westboro, was because Grafton reminded me of what Westboro was like when I was a kid. That's what I wanted my child growing up with. You go to the Holden Farm and it's all families. You see kids running around and people are there. They're able to have the dogs there. We were able to bring, have our dogs there. You meet people that you wouldn't meet otherwise in the town. And we've made friendships from going down there. I see a lot of friends of mine that I only see from high school because they go to the music there. So I don't want to keep droning on because most of what I was going to say was just some kind of tangents of what I just said. I think I've kind of hit most of this. But please support Holden Farms. It's a mandate that was clearly communicated by the town meeting. And I hope you can do everything in your powers to try and support Holden Farms. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the back?
Hi, Diane Quinlan, 111 Old Westboro Road. I've been living there since 1977. And my question to the board is, why is the Holden Farm faced with the possibility of putting in public permanent restrooms for a seasonal business? Mrs. Smith just raised... Mrs. Smith just raised the perfect example. We have the Fourth of July celebration. Tell me, that isn't over 100 people in the common, in a very dense area with limited parking facilities around it? And we use portable restrooms. Holden Farms can put in portable restrooms, handicap is accessible for people. So, why is that now being put in front of the Holden's, that this is something that they need to address?
I don't know who's putting it before them.
It's being raised.
In the materials that I read, it's, I saw some mention of that from the, I believe it was the Board of Health. That mentioned it. I, from my read, and I haven't, I admit I haven't thought long and hard on this yet, but it seems that their concern primarily on having some sort of permanent is because they're not sure on what's available as far as running water and cleaning areas for staff that are serving food. That, I believe, was their concern. I guess speak for them. I, I only know much as in our record for that so far, but.
Okay. Thank you.
And I think they'll, they'll have to get a permit for food, I imagine, and they'll deal with those folks about their issues. This, a lot of what we're hearing touches practically everybody in this building. And it's a fair path to get to all of it, but we only have a piece of it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just with respect to food service, don't, I'm not aware that they're proposing anything different than what they've been doing for the last two or three years as far as food service is concerned, so.
Yeah.
And, and again, the special permit is probably not the place to address that because that's the Board of Health's. I mean, as I said before, there are other, there are other regulations they have to meet, and we don't have jurisdiction over everything.
So, we've obtained the, you've got to come to the mic. We've obtained the, for the last three years, the food establishment permit, and that was granted to us through an agriculturally exempt, through Chapter 41A, Section 3. So, we've already had that license, so we wouldn't even be going for a new license for that. It would just be specifically to the liquor license, and then, I guess, the banquets or functions, and then the music being entertainment.
Yep.
Yep. And you have to go someplace besides here for all of that.
Yeah, right.
Or a couple of some places.
Yeah. And we probably can't emphasize that enough, that, that the special permit that's under consideration here is only part of the regulations that they have to deal with. And, and whatever we do here, you're still subject to everything else, all the other rules that you're already subject to.
Correct.
Is everyone allowed to speak? Got a chance to speak? Okay.
So, I'd like to just talk to a couple of issues that were raised that I didn't talk about yet. One was the possibility of a septic system in bathrooms. My client has agreed to install a men's room and a ladies' room and a septic system. Right? It's, it's on the plan, it's in my presentation, but they would like three years to do so. In the meantime, they would like to operate the way they've been operating with porta-potties, but they are agreeing to install a septic system. The ladies' room and men's room would be located in the current barn, so they'll be indoors. There is town water to the site already. The town water is run up to the barn, so they already have town water, and, and, and so they are willing to install a septic system. So, lastly, in summarizing this, I'd like to say we'd like to ask for a continuance to your next meeting, because I have to meet with Fiona, answer all her questions. But I would like to take a minute and talk about the criteria that the board uses to evaluate this, this proposal. And, and there's A through J. A talks about egress, access to the property. So, there's a 25-foot-wide driveway, goes straight in from the street all the way to the barn, 25-foot wide. I know the fire department likes a 24, they have 25. They have had emergency vehicles in here, no problem. They get in, they, they take up the victim, out they go. There's been no issue with emergency access. Sec, that was A, it was access. B is off-street parking. We believe we've provided adequate off-street parking, so 104 spaces, only 29 of which are, but we'll get into that, only 29 of which are on the lawn and we're calling reserved. But 104 parking spaces. All the lights are going to point downward, they'll all be hooded, there won't be any glare of lights off the site. Regarding trash removal, there are trash cans throughout the site, and they have a dumpster, big dumpster, so they empty all the trash cans, throw them in the dumpster, dumpster gets picked up weekly. Regarding buffering, we've moved the site back away from the street, I mean, from this, from the closest point here to that neighbor, Mr. Richlick, so 140 feet. And, and this way and that way, it's over 300 feet. Towards Tufts, it's over 900 feet. So, you've got over 300 feet east and west, 900 feet to the north, and over 140 feet. Regarding signs, there are no new signs proposed. Regarding open space, still have 45 acres as an active farm, lots of open space. General compatibility with adjacent properties? You know, it's a residential agricultural area, I think it's consistent. Any adverse impacts on the water supply? Well, maybe they're drawing 10 gallons a day of water, but in the future, they might go up to 100 gallons a day. That's not a problem for the water company. I, are we in an aquifer protection zone? We're not. And J, are we preserving the landscape? It's going to still look like a farm. It's been a farm, it's going to stay looking like a farm. So, I think we're going to be preserving the landscape. So, having said all that, I'd like to request a continuance for two weeks and answer any other questions that the board may have.
Are we going to, do we have anything more that we need?
I have a few questions at least.
Well, I do, I have a question for it too, but before we get to continuance.
I think the biggest thing that we need, the board should consider is the request for the waivers for the reviews, because that's going to prolong the, the hearing process, and we can take it up at the next, the next hearing through the continuance as well, but, because the applicant is requesting waiver from, I'll peer, I'll peer review.
Well, we'll figure that out in a minute. I'm a little unclear what you were saying about the distance to, basically to where the band, where the music is done, from the street.
So, from?
No, I don't want to know from there.
That's 140, it's another 172 here, so that, that's 140 plus one, that's 310, plus maybe another 10, so 320 feet.
100 yards.
And that's the rear sound deadening, 320 feet beyond that.
I, I don't quite see how you're doing that, but that sounds about right as I look at it.
And to be, just a few minor questions. Number one, that intermittent tent that is where all the music and entertainment would be, be presented, is being performed, is that accurate? That intermittent tent on your drawing on the west side of the area?
Yes, yes. The, the, the sound testing I saw was right near Mr. Richlick's mailbox, which is right about here.
I'm not asking the testing, I'm asking where the actual music's being performed. The?
Oh, the music is formed inside, only inside this, this tent.
Okay.
That has the sound, that's the only place where the music can be performed, is inside that sound deadening equipment.
That was my understanding, let's forget it, ask explicitly. Second question, is the available parking that is on your plan the exact same conditions of the site today?
Yes. Yes. Except they're not striped. We've agreed to stripe them. And all where there's pavement, we've agreed to stripe them.
And mark the handicap.
And there is no, no paving to be done as part of this plan?
None. None.
How many handicap spots?
I think there's one, two, three, four, five. Five handicap spots, which is consistent with code requirements.
They look like they're not too close to the music area.
Well.
All right.
You want it close, because, you know, they could come across the pavement here and then they get on the new surface. So, it's pretty close.
Since I use one up here, I like it to be close to the door.
Well, it's, it's right next, it's, it's, it's as close as I could get them.
Yeah. My follow-up question too is, do we have an understood max occupancy capacity in the accessory use area?
So.
That, that's a little bit.
We've talked about that. If I were to assume three people per car with 104 spaces, that's 312 people. I, I would think, would you guys be happy with a limit of 312 people? I think they would be. Hello?
Yeah. I, I'm just trying to, my own head, I'm trying to understand what, what our max potential is, if we can, if we can condition it in some way. And then, the other piece is, what is, is that max representative of what has been going there, you know, in, in the past? So, just to kind of get that in my own head.
It would be their dream to have 104 cars there. But I think if you condition 104 cars for 104 spaces.
Yeah. Yeah. If I, if I look on that diagram, I'm counting 30-some, what look like tables.
Yeah.
Those rectangular things. If those are tables, there's 30-some of those, and if you get six people per table.
Yes.
That's roughly 200 people.
Yes. Yes.
For what that's worth.
Yeah. Okay.
But you're talking about here, Dave?
Yeah.
But the music's over here facing that way. I don't understand.
Yeah, the music faces those picnic tables. The music faces the picnic tables.
Facing this way.
Oh.
It's that little.
That rectangle is open towards the picnic tables.
Yeah.
The other three sides are closed. It's only open towards the picnic tables.
Yeah.
So.
Presumably, you would expect some people standing as well as sitting at the tables, but that's harder to estimate.
So, the music.
Oh, I see it.
Yeah, so the music is pointing northeast. The music is pointing northeast towards Tufts.
All right. So, that, that's the distance that we're interested in is to, to, to right there.
And then, my, my final comment from me is, I think, at least thinking about it from what you said about the, you know, building the restrooms, building, you know, doing the septic, I think doing that, I would expect to have a peer review. I also think that that's going to be something that we might be able to, this is my opinion, that we might be able to condition in this decision and have this be performed and permitted within the next three years.
The, the septic would be under, under, under review by the Board of.
That's the Board of Health and their engineer, that's the Board of Health and their engineer. So, we would have to do perk tests in the spring.
Yeah.
And then submit the plan to the Board of Health, and then their engineer would review it.
Yeah, that, that would be, that makes sense to me. That's, I think that might be a condition that we can do.
It gets the review, the appropriate review at the time.
Yep.
Let's only regulate what we're supposed to.
That's my point.
And what we know something about.
Yeah. From me, I think we can condition it, and I'll say, from what I'm hearing so far, I'm okay with the peer review waiver, at least from, from me.
Yeah. I think, I think the key, the key to that is that, that there are no engineering changes here. There are no, no changes, no, no changes that would affect stormwater management.
Correct.
There are, there is no new paving proposed. There is, you know, the, the only actual alterations versus what's already there is the addition of the handicapped access. And that is, as Mr. Hill has pointed out, a, a pervious surface, so that's not going to change the runoff characteristics.
Now, my only kind of follow-up question on that too is, given that it has potential impacts on timeline and the applicant's cost, does the board want to make a vote today on the waiver for a peer review at the very least? So, do we want to wait?
Well, how many waivers and could we get, could we agree on consensus so that you can draft a decision? Can, that, that?
There are four waivers requested. Stormwater management, traffic, the islands and trees, and, and what was the fourth one? I forget.
Peer review.
Peer review.
The peer review.
Yeah. Well, the decision is going to have places to vote on each of those.
Yes.
And whether we vote now or better when we're considering the decision.
The, the open question was just, the board wanted to cement even the peer review waiver decision tonight. I'm indifferent in the.
I don't, I, I, I think we might get to the end easier by doing what I said.
I would agree with that.
Hmm?
I would agree with the chair.
Okay.
Okay. So, last chance for comments. Here.
I have a couple.
Hmm?
I have a couple, actually.
Oh, go ahead.
Just to address some of.
You got to, you got to, you know.
Just to address some of the comments, and I'm, you know, newer on the board, so I might not have the full history, but just going over some of the requests of the live entertainment, the, I think the public comment had mentioned Saturday, Sunday, just so I understand, what's the current, is there any current limitation on live entertainment? Or would that be?
That comes up under the selectmen, doesn't it?
Yeah, the board, the slot board issues the entertainment license, and I believe some of the terms of that license include, you know, types of entertainment, the hours of operation.
Days of operation.
Days of operation, yes.
So, that's not really a planning board, that'll be more of a select board issue.
We, we can set some, some limits on that, and then the select board can then further limit if they decide to.
Yeah.
Right. I think the question, the question for the board is whether the board wants to set any kind of parameters on that beyond what's spelled out in the zoning bylaw.
I don't want to.
I, personally, I think it, it makes sense for us to not limit that and that, you know, select board be the decision on the entertainment limits.
In other words, let, let's, let's let other folks regulate what they regulate.
I think I said that.
Right, Bob?
Yeah. Because they're supposed to know more about it than we are. And anyway, that's what they're elected for, some of them. Okay, what else? Where we're going, oh.
I think that's it, yeah. So, that would apply to both these and time, timelines as well.
Yeah. So.
Yeah. As, as, as previously noted, the zoning bylaw does have a regulation regarding the noise limit.
Yeah.
Right.
That's just part of the bylaw.
And that speaks, there was a comment about reunion, but there wasn't a, there isn't a sound level element in the decision for reunions, outdoor music. In this case, we have a zoning bylaw specification, so it's a different case, I think.
Yeah.
It's, it's also a different, whole different setting, of course. If the, if, if anybody feels the noise level is higher than the town decided to allow 10 dB above ambient, they can file a, a complaint with a building inspector, zoning officer. If he doesn't agree with them, they can appeal to the ZBA. And if the ZBA doesn't agree with them, they can appeal to courts. I mean, there is, there is a path there.
Yeah. There is.
And I don't, where they said, there were some comments that the select board had denied the building inspector's ability to issue a seasoned assist or whatever. I, do you remember the select board ever doing something like that?
I don't remember any specifics about that, but then, I, I wasn't necessarily paying attention to every minute.
No.
The thing is, that that's not.
Every aspect.
That's not accurate.
That's not within their purview. Whether they'll pay counsel to pursue something is another question. Because I know, I can remember being with the zoning officer before the, or when he was before the select board, getting some contentious issues bumped up to counsel. But that, that only rarely happens. In any case, I think that the bases are covered.
Regarding the four waiver requests, so I know how to proceed, and we know how to, it would be very much appreciated if you could vote those four waiver requests approved of them.
Well, we're going to vote them when we look at the decision. What difference does it make?
It doesn't, I guess it doesn't.
You know, we vote them, close the hearing, we have a, you know, I, I think it's, I think it's better the other way.
All right.
And I, and I think, I think I get, I'm getting a sense that the board is favorable toward the waiver requests.
Yeah.
It's a, but it does, you know, we do have to ultimately do the formality of voting.
Well, we'll have some conversations.
All right. Thank you.
Soon. Okay? You think that's okay, Fiona?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. I mean, I think the only thing would be, the one particular request is probably more time-sensitive than the others, which would be the, the peer review request, but again, we can, we can talk about it later.
Once the hearing is closed, they'll either, okay, you know.
Because it's, if, if we, if we were to vote that they needed it. Because it's if if we if the board were to vote that they needed it, that's going to prolong the.
Do any of the board members think they're going to want to require a peer review?
Not me.
Prebo? Prebo? Hello?
Yeah, I'm here.
Um, did you hear what I just asked?
Can you repeat that?
Hmm?
Please?
Oh, um, I'm asking whether any of the board members uh. Are concerned about granting the waiver for the pert peer review.
I don't have any concern on the peer review, granting waiver for that. My only question was going to be on the traffic study, but I'll come to that when we talk about.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I have some concerns.
Okay, well, that's the same issue, actually, but.
Yeah, I I.
They're having it, but.
I do have a couple of questions.
I I don't I don't really feel good about making decisions while a hearing is open. Um, you know, it's it's not even on the agenda. It's making a decision.
Right, just being accurate.
The only thing that we make a decision on is.
Continuance.
The um, uh, I guess we make a decision on the uh. The flexible development um choice.
Yes, that's that's a decision that has to come before the hearing is closed.
Right. Um, but it's in the by law to do it.
Yes.
Okay.
We would be we would be agreeable to closing the public hearing. Hello?
We.
I would be too.
No, without an answer to my letter.
Yeah.
Nice try.
We need a little bit more.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there's.
That's not a damn. That's not enough information.
If if nothing else, you know, we've got some comments from the planner that the applicant needs to address. And at this point, that's. I think that's the only information that we have yet to receive.
Yeah.
But yes, we would want to keep the hearing open just for that.
And and maybe just formal answers to the Board of Health's questions, just to be on the record.
Okay.
That that might be useful to have. I'm I'm not concerned necessarily, but just might be useful.
Yeah, okay, then if you want to ask to continue to the next meeting.
Yes, I think I I think I heard a verbal uh verbal request for that.
You'll have to. Someone will have to.
So next meeting, March eleventh. Is that accurate?
That's what he said, two weeks.
I move that we grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing until March eleventh at seven thirty PM.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Mr. Davidson.
Davidson, aye.
Mr. Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye. Mr. Van Catraman.
Aye.
And Mr. Haasner.
Aye, motion carries. See you next week. I see you two weeks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hopefully, may maybe we can have a decision uh drafted. Well. Oh, wait a minute. Oh, there's there's a slight difficulty there. She won't have the decision.
Yes, it's a little, it'll be a little challenging to do.
Wish I could grab them all for signature.
I was thinking the same thing.
Probably not a good idea.
I was thinking the same thought, too. It'd be useful, but it probably would appear bad.
Yeah, you could have put you both could have put your, you know, signature sheets out on the table there.
I I could have. I didn't want to feel like I was miss, you know, maybe people think they needed to sign when they walk in.
You can't attend the hearing without signing Bob's injunctions.
Well, no.
Undoing clothes, you know, receiving something. Yes, that that might be that might be a bad look.
Yeah, that was my thought.
Um, all right, that brings us back to town meeting zoning articles. Um. All right, we've which ones?
I think we decided on the. Section ten, Fitzgerald Smart Growth, the DHCD, EOHSC, I think we decided to go ahead with that that one change.
Yep, that's what I had in my.
Three, two, three, one, we talked about, and that's likely to be a citizen's petition.
Uh, sorry, let me get myself uh oriented here. One second. Which one is that, Justin?
The three, two, three, one, this.
That was the outpatient clinics.
Yes, yes. So just just to reiterate that, um, yes, so the so Brian Fitzgerald, who was in here earlier, to discuss. The language so he can craft the citizen's petition, because I think it really should that's the appropriate avenue for that.
Yeah, and and I think just just to re summarize what I think I heard us talk about before, that we were going to allow. Outpatient clinics of five thousand square feet or less in village mixed use with site plan review.
Yes.
And.
Yes.
If we've got a, yeah, I get we we don't necessarily need a category for over five thousand square feet. But if we wanted to include that, we would probably make over five thousand square feet a special permit in village mixed use.
Yeah, I I think.
We'll see what the board that's here then.
My my opinion on that is citizen petition could be just for the under five thousand, and we can do bigger if there's.
If there's a if there's a need for it, that's keep keep it as simple as possible. And my one other comment on that was in the definitions, the proposed definition section. I don't see where the word sanitarium sanatorium needs to be included, because that term is never used in the zoning by law, so it doesn't need a definition.
Okay, yeah, I I had done some research and noticed that it was very common for those two to be used together, so just an abundance of caution, but it's not necess. I I don't believe it's necessary.
Keeping the definition simple, hospital by what by any other name. And that that is included in the definition, and I think that's appropriate. I I could quibble about the spelling of sanatorium, but I'm not going to.
Did I? Did I send a note about? One of these has a width. With um. Uh, read through the width as well as the word after it, and the width shouldn't have been shouldn't be removed. Um, I thought I sent a message, but. Uh, I don't see it.
I don't. I don't know.
Well, maybe we'll get.
I haven't seen the message from you.
No, no, I I just emailed. All right, I thought I emailed.
Okay, section ten is good, appendix A is good. Um, okay.
So.
Oh, is this it? Yeah, twelve, twelve, two, two. Whichever that is in.
That was the VMU.
Mm hmm.
VMU, um, twelve, 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 two, two point two.
Twelve point two, point two, point three.
No, point two, I think. At least I wrote down point two. Uh, no.
It's twelve dot twelve dot two dot two.
Right. Or, oh, if I put my glasses on, I'd be able to read it. Twelve, twelve, two, two. See with section five in accordance, section five, oh, in accordance.
Oh, I get it, yep.
With the town of.
I will fix that.
I mean, I have I have to find something, don't I?
Yes. Well, no, it's good somebody caught it.
Besides that, which I missed, this one looks good to me.
Yeah, so so just a little bit before we, um, I tried to keep this like really, really simple, because I know that we do have to do a deep dive into the VMU, and we already discussed that. And I don't want to go down that that rabbit hole tonight, but I but I do want to say that I I included language. We have a lot of projects. Um, that are going to be coming up. In VMU districts that, you know, I I'm just thinking that it might be wise to consider having something. Um, sorry, here we go. This is all I'm. I'm, you know, if if we don't want to do this, I just want to get like a final answer from the board tonight, but I'm just thinking we have VMU Transit Village, which is coming up. Um, eventually, I mean, we're still waiting on the Windsor Point, the Pulte to finish Windsor Point, because they're doing the road and the utilities that will eventually. Lead to the Afonso Billings, which will have to follow the criteria for VMU Transit Village. We have activity in Bolak Plaza potentially coming up. We have the seventeen and twenty seven Upton Street project, which is going to be VMU Gateway. I mean, I just think that with the complexity of the zoning. As it's written currently, and we need to dedicate some serious time to looking it over. I don't know if this is still something that we want to maybe consider. Or if we just want to make everybody comply with the regs as written, then that's fine with me, too, but we just have a lot of projects coming up, and they're coming up fast.
A little worried about workload and timelines.
As am I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And uh. Probably a few other things will come up come by while we're not looking.
Yes, yes, we just have a lot. I just seventeen and twenty seven Upton, as I mentioned at the last meeting, is they're they're planning on filing um in the spring. So it's definitely not going to give us enough time to look at the VMU. Like, there's some, there's like a lot of very specific things in it that I can.
And when.
It's it's.
If this changes and does go into effect July first, anything that's filed before July first wouldn't have that available to them, would they? Would it?
Yeah, but if the AG approves it, the approvals.
Yeah, the AG approval is retroactive to the town meeting date.
Okay.
Or a zoning by law.
I thought it went to July first, but I was wrong.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's a good question.
There are other actions taken at a May town meeting that go into effect July first, i.e. the start of a new fiscal year.
Right.
But that's irrelevant to the zoning by law.
Yeah, but that's probably, but yeah.
And and the date of the effective date of general by law changes is not, this doesn't go by the same rules as zoning by law changes. But.
And that's probably where I was getting myself confused on.
There. I just, I can't remember exactly, but I I should remember something about. If a by law changes, particularly in your favor. There sometimes I think there's a choice. You can. You can use the new.
I vaguely remember something like that.
I don't know where it is. It's been twenty, thirty years.
Yeah, I I think I, yeah, I know what you mean, Bob. I think you can, there is like an option, but I think most people like the ability of. The AG retroactively approving, because it usually works that way.
But 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 it wouldn't, no.
Yeah.
Anyway.
Well, anyway, that that so, yeah, not to, you know, belabor the point, but I just I just am a little bit concerned that the board will have. Issues with some of these incoming applications and a- and we won't be able to do what we need to do to our VMU by law in time. So do we want to allow a little bit of flexibility? With a minor um change that will allow this additional section. Um, and then obviously, like any other applicant who's requesting a waiver, they have to justify why they're asking for it, and the board can exercise their discretion.
You're the one who knows what is going on and what might or might not need changing.
Mm hmm.
Bring what whatever you can comfortably handle.
Like.
That really will make, you know, that's really needed.
Yeah, I mean, I I could, I'll use like a, I I I will use seventeen twenty seven Upton Street, and it is a building that is set back from the road significantly. Because there's constraints at the site, the VMU by law tends to prefer buildings that are up against the street line. It's those types of things where it's like. The flexibility isn't there in the bylaws written.
Well, if it's an important thing. Bring it something, but but don't, you know, don't try to solve everything.
Yeah, I think, you know, that that is an example of uh what ultimately is is in my mind that we need to sort of. Take another look through the VMU, because some of the some of the VMU sites we have in Grafton. Aren't really a good fit for the vision that is expressed in the VMU.
Yeah, and the wording, it's like.
Seventeen twenty seven Upton Street is a particularly good example of that, because that's a it's a very small parcel of land, and the the VMU regulations and design standards generally are. Are are looking at something rather larger with a number of buildings and some maybe internal streets and so on, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, the seventeen twenty seven is not a real good fit for the vision that's expressed in the VMU.
Yeah, it's in short, the VMU sometimes for projects, it can be, you know, square peg, round hole. And it's a little hard, and the board has little ability to kind of navigate that, because there hasn't been that many applications.
Yep.
And we, you know.
I think sure sure sort of taking a more substantial look at VMU and kind of really thinking of how it fits or doesn't fit. With the areas of Grafton that are currently zoned VMU or areas that might in the future be zoned VMU. Uh, lacking a sort of a a a more comprehensive review of that. Uh, a basic capability for the board to grant some flexibility is important.
Yeah.
Okay, can we?
Yeah.
Move along.
No concerns for me.
What do we have left?
I mean, just just as a note, there were a variety of other minor, you know, sense of minor wording changes that, you know, Fiona has marked up throughout the VMU, which. You know, looking through those, those are all pretty straightforward.
They were really, yeah, like, um, you know, minor grammar things that were driving me cuckoo that I had to change.
I had no problem with any of that.
Okay, and we can talk more in depth about, you know, those types of things, too, when we get to the when once we do the planning board report.
Moving on.
There's two more left, two dot one and one dot three dot three dot four.
One dot three dot three dot four looks to me like we need to do that.
Yep, that one came up the last hearing, actually, Justin caught it, or Dave caught it. Somebody, Dave caught it, yeah.
Yes, I've I have been skimming or scanning AG approval letters off and on. Particularly as a result of my work on the by law study committee, and I've noticed this repeatedly, that in recent years, AG is saying.
Yep.
Yep.
That language in a zoning by law language, allowing the associate member to participate in anything other than a special permit is in conflict with state law.
Right.
So this this clears that up.
Yeah.
And I checked the by law.
As a side note, there there is being floated in the legislature, a proposal to amend state law to allow more of a role for associate members.
I did see that.
Yeah, well, that won't happen this week.
No, definitely not. So, yeah, this is this is this is do it.
All right. I think there were two places that that came up, two different.
Yes, the VMU, which we addressed, and then.
Okay.
It's also in wireless.
We agreed in.
Isn't it? Is that is that also in the wireless section?
The not that level of specificity.
Yeah.
But I was using the wireless as a model for the VMU.
All right.
Anyway.
So that's right now, this is the only place where it's a concern.
Yes, I triple checked. You'd be proud of me, Dave.
VMU, VMU is dumb, right?
Okay.
Now, now we're on.
Seasonal definition.
Um, seasonal use, and I. Had a slightly different version that I.
Did you see the?
Define it maybe as a use that is only made during a portion of the year, which has a specified duration in the use table.
A specified duration in the use table. Uh, okay, yeah, we could do that.
That that might.
I have not seen.
Reasonably cover. Uh, because the by law says six months, doesn't it?
The by law says nothing right now.
Well, for.
It just says seasonal.
Uh, no, no, but.
There's nothing for seasonal.
I thought there was.
Nothing, that's why we need it.
Not not definition wise, but the actual.
Uh, use table.
Use table.
Yeah, the use table specified, and I don't know what else is seasonal.
My. Laptop's not showing me. Um. I didn't, I I looked, and I didn't see it. Maybe I'm just missing it, but. Give me a second. Can someone direct maybe a page number or something? I'll get there faster.
Page twenty nine of thirty, when I just pulled the zoning. Oh, that's not the right thing. Never mind. Hold on. That's a wrong link.
Okay, here we go. Seasonal is used when discussing outdoor dining. Seasonal is used throughout the by law in talking about certain things, but it's not um really like memorialized in a concrete way. And now we have a seasonal application before.
I do see it in the use table on page. Oh, that's it's weird. Appendix A.
What item?
Page eight.
Page eight.
For seasonal outdoor eating and drinking establishments, and it doesn't say a timetable.
So the the long one, right? Number fifteen? That's, yes, that that's, yeah.
That's exactly. It doesn't say a timetable in that, just says seasonal.
Right.
Okay.
But.
Then forget what I said.
Right, but yeah, because that's that's the and and also the seasonal, the outdoor. Right, but yeah, cuz that's that's the and and also the seasonal, the outdoor dining and and a lot of bylaws, just so. You know, it, a lot of bylaws I've noticed reference seasonal. But don't have a definition, but I think because of the new bylaw that was passed in May, as well as outdoor dining. We should have some sort of parameters that we can hang our hat on so we can regulate as within our purview. Um, so, so Bob, that's, so you. You wanna, okay, and then, so Justin, you had a couple of comments.
Yeah.
That we should probably talk through.
Yeah, so my concern with the proposed wording that says use a law structure for one hundred eighty consecutive days or less per year. Is if a business only opens three day, you know, three weekend days, you know, in a row, that worked out to be. Less than one hundred eighty days in the year if they open every single weekend and none of those are more than three consecutive days.
Yeah.
Which is a harder.
Just just the not quite the right wording.
So like I I suggested, and this might not work out, but this is was my initial thought. Use a law structure only within a period of one hundred eighty consecutive days or less per year, which.
I guess I'm just, can you explain, sorry, can you explain it to me again? Cuz I'm trying to, I'm I'm like, I'm trying to, I. I feel like you you have you have something, but I just wanna make sure that I'm understanding it properly before.
When I.
I say something.
Yeah, use of a lot structure only within a period of one hundred and eighty consecutive days less per year, so for example, like. March first until whatever, hundred eighty days later, that's the period, and then they use it only within that period.
Yeah.
Right, but but it it, yeah, but it's like that consecutive, like to me, I just, yeah, I don't know. I feel like that's problematic because it's kind of what we're saying, like your point, to your point about weekend businesses, it's like, it's not.
Yeah.
Consecutive, you know. Some bylaws do it by month, bu- on a monthly basis.
Yeah, but but the season, mostly we're talking about outdoor, like agricultural or or. Some sort of outdoor entertainment thing, which is the, you know, I don't know, April to October or something like that.
I'm I'm also thinking in my own head that seasonal could easily be representative of, let's say. A place that has an ice skating rink or a pond and they're doing ice skating activities, that would be different months. And it's within a period of that period of time. And.
Yeah, it's it's it opens up the, it's, yeah, it opens up Pandora's box cuz it's like, well, what what does the. What do we want to classify as seasonal and what types of uses are we anticipating using that definition?
Ri- right now, you have outdoor entertainment, what else?
Outdoor dining.
Yeah.
Outdoor dining and.
Yeah, we don't define seasonal in the use table for anything else, I don't believe.
That's right.
In the use table.
In the use table and it's and not much in the, I mean, the bylaws, it's, I think it appears like five times in the entire bylaw, including. Talk into including in the use table when we say the new, you know, the um. The accessory use that.
Yes.
That we passed and the outdoor dining, other than that, and that's common in bylaws, so just the board's aware, but.
Yeah, so what we wanna say, I think, it sounds like it's something more along the lines of. A seasonal use is a use that. Occurs only within a specified period of time, but without saying the frequency of the use.
But who specifies?
Right, that's where I think it gets.
Maybe only within a consecutive period of one hundred eighty, I'm just, that's my thinking, just because the period is.
I.
That like while while calendar time in my own head.
I I think we should just forget it and let people worry about it.
Yeah, but yeah.
Planting board says.
Say like, doesn't span across more than two out of four seasons, something like that.
Yeah, now you have to.
But it, yeah, I just, my concern is that, you know. Yeah, uh and what, the the powers of the planning board, I mean, you know, they they, you know, for example, you know, the application. We have applications presented to us for a certain timeframe and we, yes, the the planning board can vote on that. It would be a lot cleaner and easier to have something in the bylaw to point to um legally as well. But um.
I think if we didn't define it and somebody started doing something that really didn't. Um match that spirit, I think that they could. There there could be an appeal or or a complaint, a zoning complaint, that this is not seasonal. And then there can be a decision, uh you know, probably the the building inspector and the the zoning officer. And the Z B A can decide whether it's a seasonal use.
But I'm wondering, just, I I see what you're saying, no, I totally see what you're saying, but I'm wondering.
Simple is good.
Yeah, I I think probably we can get away with using the uh just relying on the generally.
Accepted.
Accepted definition of the term seasonal, everybody kind of knows what it means. Uh if we do encounter a case where it becomes problematic. Then maybe we uh we we would see a need to formalize the definition, but as it is. I'm just this discussion here makes it reasonably clear to me that it's not easy to formalize the definition. In terms suitable for inclusion in in the zoning bylaw.
Yeah, it's, you, yeah, you kind of have, it is a, there's a few different considerations of, and it's of, you know. Every town is different, you know, sometimes it's one of those things, like a lot of seasonal communities, like. Beach towns in the Cape or whatever, like their classification of what seasonal is and their types of. The way they utilize land and that's, it's different than Grafton, you know.
All right.
Like the shops on a main street, for example, they're open from like uh Memorial Day to Labor Day essentially.
Right, and that's the thing.
If if it's not defined, it goes to the dictionary, doesn't it?
Yeah.
As to what the word means.
Yes.
And um Google Dictionary tonight tells me that seasonal. Uh is an adjective relating to or characteristic of a particular season of the year. A selection of seasonal fresh fruit.
And.
And fluctuating or restricted according to the season or time of year. There are no companies whose markets are seasonal, uh there are companies, um so. I think I think just the the dictionary definition is, you know, we don't have to, we don't have to do it again.
And I.
I think everybody knew what it meant and.
What other?
It still does.
In some searching, I did find Chatham's zoning bylaws, you know, updating tw- at least twenty twenty two, I don't know when this was added, but. Does say seasonal use means the use of a law or structure for one hundred and eighty days or less per year on the average.
Yep.
An applicant may show use for more than one hundred eighty days, whatever, and goes on, which is probably where you got your initial wording from.
Let me, let me.
Well, a lot of the K, a lot of towns have that exact same thing.
Yeah, I'll follow up on Bob's definition of seasonal by referring to season. A period of the year characterized by particular conditions of weather, temperature, et cetera. So that that sort of, you know, seasonal in 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 one sense is something that happens or in particular season.
Yep.
And season has like, that's a reasonable definition.
Can we say what I said, go with the dictionary and.
Whatever the board wants, I I just, you know, with the with the new bylaw, there's a lot.
Does anybody not want what I said?
I'm happy with relying on the commonly understood meaning of the word.
Brad Bu, how do you feel? Brad Bu, how do you feel?
As long as I'm able to click on the buttons and unmute myself and speak.
Whatever he just said, what did he say?
Said two thumbs up for what Bob said.
Okay, I think um I I think we have consensus, do we?
Yeah, my only concern is that if we if we define it, then we should be aware of edge cases and try to make sure we're not. Painting ourselves into a corner beyond what we were expecting, that was my only opinion, so I'm happy.
Well, that's, it's it's a tight, it's a tight rope that you walk, right? Cuz you get too prescriptive and then or or too relaxed. Yeah, I know, it's hard, this is the nerdy planning.
It's always been in there because everyone knows what it means, they read the dictionary and um.
Fair enough, okay, we'll do that, that's fine, I'm happy with that, I just.
Yep.
Okay.
What was I about to do? Um, so we're we're done bills.
I move we approve and pay our bills.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Mister Davidson.
Aye.
Mister Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mister Veco Truman.
Aye.
And Mister Hassenger.
Aye, motion carries.
Oh, I'm sorry to revert back to the previous topic. I wouldn't, I'm just curious as to where we are with the possible changes to the wireless section of the bylaw.
I was not able to get uh feedback, I followed up with Mister Max and he's, it's it's on his radar. I think he's he's working on in the background, he is away though right now.
Answers my question, done.
Done, perfect.
Um, okay, minutes of or did, we just did bills.
Yes.
Minutes.
I move that we approve our minutes.
Second.
From December eleventh, twenty twenty three.
Correct.
Yep, second.
Moved and seconded, discussion, hearing none, oh uh roll call.
Mister Davidson. Mister Robbins.
Aye.
Mister Veco Truman.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mister Hassan.
Motion carries, uh staff report.
Okay, really quick, so uh not not anything significant since the last time I gave a staff report, other than. Me, there's been a lot of, a lot more um meeting with potential applicants, walking them through the bylaw requirements that they need. Answering, you know, those types of questions, looking at iterations of plans, providing comment. Prior to filing, we're trying to get these people teed up as much as possible so they're ready to come before the boards and and have a um. Hopefully, you know, e- quicker um review time, uh, yep, we had uh. Fisherville D M, R F P responses are in, questions were submitted, responses provided. We extended the timeline request by a week, so we will be receiving um. Responses to the R F P officially by March eighteenth, um. Uh yeah, I I think other than that, I I'm I'm working on trying to follow up on the A G's letter, which is. Takes some time, so I'm 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 working with council on that, I I had a lot of questions. Um that I'm still waiting to hear back and I might. Uh, Dave, if you're available, I might ask you to help me with the follow up. That we do post town meeting because it's uh you have a good eye, catch catch things and sometime, you know, just wanna um have. Two eye, two sets of eyes on it when we update the bylaw and publish it on the website, um.
Yeah, pretty help.
Uh thank you, I appreciate that, and then other than that, I I have some follow up I need to do about our open space uh parcel prioritization. Project, I have to ask around, do some interviews, uh, yeah, and then preparing for, you know. Town meeting for May. That's.
Okay, correspondence, was that the A G letters you were talking about? I don't know what to make of them, but they're there and you're looking at them, right? All right, we do not have our. Uh people on on, I don't see that we have, uh, well, okay, no, this is, let me look at the real. Real agenda, nah, number five is is not on our. Our.
But it's on the official agenda.
It it's on the official agenda, but it's not on useful agenda. All right, requests, uh reports from planning board representatives on town committees and C M R P C.
So as the board's representative on the open space and recreation committee. I can report that the open space and recreation committee working with Fiona and Central Mass Regional Planning is. Making some progress on the parcel prioritization project that Fiona mentioned. Uh if you don't remember what that is, uh uh Central Mass Regional Planning is. Taking a kind of a comprehensive look at all the parcels of land in Grafton and evaluating all of them. Or not all of them, a a a rather comprehensive subset of them, you know, for possible value as open space. And so they're taking into account things like proximity to existing protected open space, wildlife habitats, wetlands. There's like twelve parameters that they're doing a G I S calculation on. Locations of historic features, among others, and so they've they sort of presented the first, the the first draft of that to the. Open Space Rec Committee on February fifteenth, and we're following up uh with some uh review of that. And uh among other things, uh so some some details of. You know, the the current status of various parcels, which I just forwarded to Matt Franz at C M R P C today. Uh so they're they're gonna be doing some review and updating of the analysis. Uh meanwhile, we're also various agencies in town are looking at what what use they might make of that. I mean, one obvious use is when a chapter sixty one parcel comes up for review, uh we hope that this prioritization will help to. To gauge the value of that particular parcel relative to other potential parcels, uh there are probably other. Other uses we can make of that prioritization data, uh but that progress, the the project is moving along nicely.
I think it'll be a useful tool for various boards to be able to use once we finalize it.
All right, from from C P C, there's three projects that are going before the. The town, this most likely, if the C P C votes to approve them at our next meeting, the um. There's one, none of them really affect the planning board that much, but one for the Congressional Church of Grafton for making necessary repairs to granite. Entrance and walkway, some exterior carpentry repairs, and that kind of thing. There's also one for the Baptist Church of Grafton, which is right next to the library, basically, it's right on South Street there, Christian and Common. Part of the historic district, there's some repairs to um the, essentially the facade of the columns there. And there's potential risk on if the the support posts of the columns themselves are actually damaged. Or if it's just the, you know, wrapping of it basically, but so they're looking to do that and. To repair it a little bit, and then there's further work with the Cisco Homestead in Nipmuck, Nipmuck House. That they're, they have the plans to, you know, essentially take this to near completion, I believe. And then their plans include even a handicap accessible entrance to the main, you know, property, so. To use that as a museum going forward.
Justin, can I ask a question about C P C? Are you all set with Affordable Housing Trust information?
I.
Uh, there was a request.
There's a formal request, I I'm. I do not recall offhand if there is more we need from you on that, but I know we have a.
I I believe Eric Swenson is handling it.
That's what I thought.
A town accountant has pulled reports, Amber is technically the the staff point person for the trust, but I do, I do assist as well, but.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to make sure because it was, I I was following up on it for a while and then I just kind of took a step back cuz I was like, okay, it seems like. It's okay.
I know at least one member did comment about that, there was some reports that the Affordable Housing Trust has never provided the C P C, but that we're still wanting to get. So it was one of those things that it's never been provided before, but they were hoping to get the kind of report.
Okay.
From them, but, yeah, I and we're, they're doing this year, having it be a formal application process to get the. Money transferred to the Affordable Housing Trust, which should have been done from years ago, from what I understand.
Well, why, why? It's a statutory requirement that the trust gets that ten percent, so why do they have to apply for it?
It's a statutory requirement that the money gets put aside for affordable housing uses. It's not a such a requirement that we transfer it to a trust, technically.
Really? I thought it was supposed to go into a municipal affordable housing trust fund, I don't, I I.
My under- my understanding is the money has to be, ten percent has to be dedicated toward that use. And stay available for that use every year.
Okay.
But it does not necessarily mean that that use is going to be in a affordable housing trust or something else. But that is how Grafton has done it, and that is, you know, that makes sense for Grafton, but.
Right, it's a statutory requirement that the money be reserved for affordable, for community housing purposes, to use the technical term in the C P A.
Yeah.
Uh, it is, in communities with a housing and affordable housing trust, it is common. For that money to be transferred to the trust, but it's not a statutory requirement.
Yeah, yeah, a town meeting has to decide to use any of the money reserved in any of the three, right?
Yes, and it's all by, all that money is expended appropriated by vote at town meeting.
And the trick, part of the trick to that is town meeting has to approve to. Expend any of the C P A funds to any particular use, by the town approving to send it to the Affordable Housing Trust. The trust then does not need to get a secondary approval from the town for any particular use that does meet the C P A qualifications.
Okay.
But, you know, they could say, oh, we have this affordable housing use, we want to use affordable housing funds for this use and bring that to town meeting. Or they can use the money we appropriate to the Affordable Housing Trust in that regard.
And why shouldn't they bring projects, same as the other categories?
The the trust can request additional, I mean, the the trust gets the the funds that the Community Preservation Committee chooses to hand over to them and that has to be a minimum of ten percent, it can be more. And if the trust has a particular use for more funds, they can, they can request it and C P C can approve it.
But why why shouldn't um it work like everything else, town meeting will know where that money is actually going instead of uh the trust, which is who's the trust answerable to?
The trust is answerable to the trustees, which are.
See where I'm going?
Yes, yes, the the Affordable Housing Trust has the authority to spend its funds without town meeting approval.
Yep, so.
That's the way the trust is by law set up.
I I would, it just seems right that money that town town meeting shouldn't just hand that money over there when there might be, someone else might bring a a a project.
Yeah, one one brief comment on that point, just to say is that there is other funds the Affordable Housing Trust receives and has in their pocketbook, so to speak, that they can use for their endeavors and that's.
It's not like a consecutive like flow of money like C like C P A is, so it's it's like a, it's an oddity. You know, it's like a like the portal, pulti settlement or whatever, you know, something like that.
It was a large settlement, which went into there.
But.
Went in, went one way or the other, I'm not, well, yeah, there was a whole long story, but it went into there.
Right, when you're trying to do housing.
One of the, one of the bottom lines is that the Affordable Trust can accept and use C P C money, but that's not its sole source of funding.
Correct.
And in fact, the the parameters on what the funds can be used for are different depending on the source of the funds.
Hmm, yeah, yeah, it's it's.
The the funds that the Affordable Housing Trust receives from the Community Preservation are more limited in what they can do than are the less restricted funds that the trust receives.
Okay, we've said it about forty nine.
All right, I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, not debatable, roll call.
Mister Davidson.
Aye.
Mister Robbins.
Aye.
I vote aye, Mister Vecchitt Truman.
Aye.
And Mister Hassinger.
Aye, we are adjourned.